Assistant of the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District, I call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Chair Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Board member Yates.
President.
Vice Chair Lysay.
Yes.
Board member Brown.
Yes.
Board member Lawrence Hampton.
Yes.
Board member Elke.
Yes.
Board member Dickey.
Yes.
And, uh, call for the public, do we have any super cards?
No ma'am.
Alright, number one, consideration of approving the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board Meeting Minutes of June seventh, two thousand twelve.
So moved.
Second. Uh, any super cards?
No ma'am.
Any council discussion? Okay then, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman Seven Zero.
Consideration of Resolution EMCFC two thousand twelve, their O three, amending the notice provisions in Resolution EMCFC two thousand twelve, their O one, and EMCFC two thousand twelve, their O two, related to the required public hearings by setting an additional public hearing on August second, two thousand twelve.
So moved. Second.
Andrew.
Ma'am, ma'am members of the council, after the last, uh, notices were come out, we discovered a defect in the prior notice, and rather than fudging it at all, we're just gonna move it off to August and re-notice everything and make sure it's done exactly properly. We've got another meeting to do it. We can do the final budget's option hearing and levy all in August on the first meeting.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, uh, any council discussion? Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, at this time, I will adjourn the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District Board, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, I will open a special session of the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board, and roll call please.
Chair Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Board member Yates.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lysay.
Yes.
Board member Dickey.
Yes.
Board member Elke.
Yes.
Board member Hampton.
Yes.
Board member Brown.
Yes.
And, uh, call for the public and super cards?
No ma'am.
Consideration of approving the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board Meeting Minutes of June seventh, two thousand twelve.
So moved.
Are you any super cards?
No ma'am.
Council discussion. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair Seven Zero.
Consideration of Resolution CNB two thousand twelve, their O three, amending the notice provision in Resolution CNB two thousand twelve, their O one, and CNB two thousand twelve, their O two, related to the required public hearing by setting an additional public hearing on August second.
So moved. Second. Aye.
Any council discussion? Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman Seven Zero.
At this time, I will adjourn the Cottonwood Maintenance District Board, motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Alright, and that, now we will open the regular section of the town council meeting of June twenty first, and we'll have some pleasurable reading. Pleasurable reading.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And, uh, Pastor Good. Pastor Good from Fountain Hills Presbyterian Church, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you for asking. Would you pray with me? Gracious and loving Lord, you bless us in so many ways. We give you thanks for the beauty and the vitality of this community, and we give you thanks that you have called each of us the leadership here in our own way. So we ask now that you would be very present with us this evening as we seek to carry out the responsibilities which you have entrusted to us. Grant us integrity, that we might be true to our shared calling. Grant us vision, that we might be respectful of our traditions, yet open to the new possibilities which are just now revealing themselves. Grant us discernment, that we might govern wisely and decide rightly. Grant us courage, that we might move forward boldly. Protect us, we pray, from all those things which undermine clear communication, gracious governance, and strong society. In the power of your spirit, bind us together in the common cause of forwarding the best interests of all who call Fountain Hills home. Lord, we confess that the task which lies before us is more than we dare undertake under our own individual strength. It is more than we can hope to achieve even under our concerted will as a group. So be with us, we pray. Guard us, guide us, and direct us, that we may be the best we can be, and that your loving will for this community which you are so richly blessed becomes a reality. We come before you from numerous faith traditions, we hear you speak in many voices, we call you by many names, but together we all know you as the one true God, Creator and sustainer of all that is good, and right, and beautiful. And so it is that we turn to seek your guiding spirit this night, that we might celebrate those things with which you bind us together, rather than bowing to those with which we hold ourselves apart. Amen.
Amen.
Next, that, can we have a roll call please?
Mayor Cavanaugh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lysay. Council member Dickey.
Yes.
Council member Brown.
Yes.
Council member Yates.
President.
Council member Hampton.
Yes.
Council member Elke.
Yes.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to read a proclamation designating July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Fountain Hills, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs still help the active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase the community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers for development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by I, Linda Cavanaugh, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Fountain Hills. Okay, um... We have call for the public, any super cards?
No ma'am.
Alright, and we'll go on to our consent agenda. Number one, consideration for approval of Resolution two thousand twelve, their sixteen, abandoning certain fortunes of the public facility and drainage easement located at one five in two eight East Tumble, Tumbleweed Drive. And with two, consideration of approving a liquor license application submitted by Russ Lynn McComb, owner agent of Fountain Entertainment LLC, VBA ten, located at one six seven three seven East Parkview Avenue for a series seven licensed beer and wine bar. Number three, consideration of confirming appointments as follows, to serve on the town council subcommittee for the purpose of interviewing applicants for the town boards and commissions in fiscal year two thousand twelve thirteen, as listed. And, uh, do we have a motion?
So moved, ma'am.
Second. Any super cards?
No ma'am.
Council discussion. Okay, then we will, um, have a roll call, both please.
Council member Yates.
Aye.
Council member Hampton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lysay.
Aye.
Council member Dickey.
Aye.
Council member Elke.
Aye.
Council member Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Chair Seven Zero.
And I'd like to thank all the council members for serving on the subcommittee. And we go on to our regular agenda items. Number four listed, consideration of appointing two citizens to the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, each for a two-year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. I move to appoint Audra, Coaster, Thomas, and Peter Bordeaux to serve on the Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, each for a two-year term expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. And I need a second?
Second.
Any super cards?
No ma'am.
And council discussion. Okay, and we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Council member Yates.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lysay.
Aye.
Council member Brown.
Aye.
Council member Dickey.
Aye.
Council member Hampton.
Aye.
Council member Elke.
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Chair Seven Zero.
And I want, I would like to thank both Audra and Peter for offering to serve for the next three years. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank, uh, other than the individuals that did apply, we were, we were very lucky to actually have four applicants for two positions, which was really a good problem to have.
Okay. Anything else in council? Alright, go on to number five, consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by Robert Bo James, representing the veterans of foreign wars, host number five, seven, five, oh, seven, for the purpose of a fundraiser to be held at Fountain Park Performance Head, an immediate area on Wednesday, July fourth, two thousand twelve, from four P M to ten P M. Can please?
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, there's a, um, request for a project for the, um, recommendation regarding the liquor license for a special event, um, staff recommends approval for that. The Fourth of July event's gonna be held at the park. It's, uh, a number of activities gonna be there with parachute teams and, and, uh, music, as well as other activities that's, uh, that's going on with, uh, the July Fourth event. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, council? Questions? Yes, councilman Elke.
Thank you, ma'am. I can provide, uh, some of this one information. This is, uh, Fourth at the Fountain, um, I'll be abstaining from this vote as I establish an LLC to bring a large event, a large Fourth of July event back to Fountain Hills. There will be a nighttime skydiving drop, we have aging hipsters which will be performing, as well as, um, Arizona Blues Project, hot dog eating contest, lot of fun food, and activities for the kids. The nighttime skydiving, uh, uh, diving drop is gonna be phenomenal. We won't have, uh, fireworks or a laser light show this year, but, uh, hopefully in years to come, if the event is successful and people attend, which I fully anticipate, we're gonna have a great time down there.
Any other second from council? Alright, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, and any super cards?
No ma'am.
Alright, thank you. Any more council discussion? Then, uh, call for the vote, roll call vote please.
Council member Hampton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lysay.
Aye.
Council member Dickey.
Aye.
Council member Yates.
Aye.
Council member Elke is abstaining. Council member Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero.
Alright, number six, consideration with possible direction to staff relating to the operation of the fountain in Fountain Park. Can please? Alright.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, Mark has a, um, um, a report regarding the memo that's in your packet for discussion of the alternative for the, uh, operation of the fountain. Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, um, over the years, I have received a number of, uh, requests from the public to take a look at the operation of the fountain, and I, I'm sure that, uh, council members have received similar, if not more, requests, uh, received several fairly recently, and I thought it was probably a good change with the, the change in the mayorship and the council as a whole, to bring this item up and, uh, ask for your consideration if there's an alternative way that the, uh, council might be interested in having us operate the fountain. What I tried to do there was list the alternatives that I'd heard over the past and different options, as indicated in my report, uh, given the, uh, variables, there are probably hundreds, if not thousands, of possible options between the motors, runtime, hours of the day, that kinda thing. Um, we also tried to look at options that stayed within our budget. Clearly, some of the options that are shown, uh, are exceeding the budget, which next year is set at a hundred thirty, eight thousand five hundred for the operation of the fountain. Um, just to clarify something, the night runtimes are unaffected. This is simply, uh, talking about the times when the fountain runs for the purpose of, uh, people, uh, watching the fountain, if not to cover the, uh, mixing that we do at night. So, this is clarification I wanted to make to everybody. Um, the cost, as we indicated, uh, would also include in the report, I said that there would be some additional costs that we changed the runtime, a six hundred dollar fee to do reprogramming that would be required, and then, secondly, an expense of six thousand dollars. You may recall that a year or two ago, we installed signage around the park at six locations, that, uh, has signage that describes how the fountain operates and what time. So, if the times were changed, we would need to change those out again. Um, I also, uh, at the end of the report, made a recommendation that whatever direction the council gives me, if there's a change to how we're operating the fountain, we would suggest, and I would encourage, that we, uh, contact the, uh, estimators from SRP to give us a better idea on exactly where those numbers would be. I'd be the first one to admit this isn't my expertise. Uh, we have what is called a rolling rate that's charged to the fountain. Basically, what that means is that the rate is constantly changing. It's based on how many other users are on the grid at any one time, and how much power is being used. So, when somebody asks me what it costs to run the fountain, I kinda have to explain it in fairly simple terms, 'cause that's the best way to understand it. And that's what I tried to do in my report. Basically broke it down in the number of runtimes. Uh, there's much more scientific ways of doing that, and SRP can do that for us. And so, whatever the council decides, I think we should take that recommendation, uh, that suggestion to SRP, and get a better feel what those final numbers might be. Um, I also indicated in there that there was a range of, uh, costs associated with, from a, uh, a high of an additional fifty-five thousand to a cost savings potential of as much as sixty-seven thousand. So that's a pretty good swing. Um, so with that, um, I don't wanna spend a lot of time and bore you with a lot of numbers, but frankly, there wasn't another way to do it. Uh, so I won't spend a whole lot of time on each of these scenarios, but, uh, briefly touch on the highlights. Um, the current operation, as I described there, basically runs thirteen times on the hour for a fifteen minute time period, and so we broke it down based on the number of times that it runs per year, and figured out based on that cost, we're looking at somewhere around twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents for a fifteen minute run. Uh, one of the other options that's been suggested is running the fountain on one pump continually for twelve hours. Um, that would be roughly, we're estimating from nine o'clock in the morning to nine o'clock at night. You have the second pump on, pump come on four times daily, again, these are arbitrary, uh, but nine, noon, three, and six, seem to be a fairly reasonable spacing. Uh, the intent was to provide something when it first came on, and then again, in the evening, perhaps when people downtown restaurants, bars, that kinda thing. Um, and again, you can see the cost. There's one typo that I wanted to make you aware of, in case somebody tries this on their own. On that last bullet point under item number two, uh, says both of these, uh, cost is a hundred twenty-six thousand, six thirteen, should be a hundred and five, 'cause if you add those two numbers together, you don't get a hundred twenty-six, six thirteen. So, one change there. Um, and then, uh, another suggestion that was, we were asked to look at was simply running the fountain an additional fifteen minutes. So a total of thirty minutes. And then, as you can see here, the numbers, uh, cost would be an additional fifty-five thousand in contrast with the, uh, with the savings above on option number two. The fourth option is to run it continuously for eight hours on two pumps. Again, there's the cost right down there, times the number of days, um, and additional cost of four thousand. So a little bit more actually than we have budgeted at this point. And option number eight, or excuse me, number five, would be a continuous eight-hour run on one pump instead of two pumps. Again, not surprising there'd be substantial savings of around sixty-seven thousand dollars. And the last one was a suggestion that has come forward on the possibility of changing the operation of what we do now on windy days. The fault is set up so that because of the spray drift and the effluent that you need to keep on the site, not, uh, hit pedestrians or people with their cars parked, or neighboring homes, uh, with effluent water, is that in the past, it used to operate and come up on one pump, then come up a sec, on a second pump, and then it would shut itself down if the wind speeds were nine to ten miles an hour or over, okay? Uh, that has now been changed, so the fountain doesn't come on at all. And again, it reads the, the wind speed for a period of time, both before the fountain is to come off, and then after it does, in fact, come up, it'll read the airspeed for a period of time. And if that, the airspeed exceeds that nine to ten miles an hour, it will shut itself down. In this case, it no longer comes on, is the way it's operating now. So under this scenario, we would instead of two pumps, we would operate on one pump. Obviously, the spray drift will be a lot less. We could turn up the wind speed, uh, we don't know exactly what that magical number might be, but the assumption is it could be twenty-five, thirty miles an hour. So anything short of monsoon-type wind, then we probably are gonna be okay. We'd have to monitor that and figure out what the wind speeds would be. But that's another option. So, whereas the first five options are really associated with running the fountain on a daily basis, the last option is, uh, in a highly developed. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can, um... Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, my, my recommendation that we give consideration to number two. That would be running it, um, for the twelve hours, nine to nine, on one pump, nine A M to nine P M, and four times daily, that we kick on the second pump for a fifteen minute period during those four times. And then we could adjust the wind speed, so that it would always stay on in that one pump.
And, uh, councilman Brown?
Thank you, ma'am. I live across the street, Mark, from, from the fountain, uh, actually adjacent to the pump, and the first thing I would like to talk about is your volometer, your wind speed control. You might not put some W D forty on that occasionally.
(laughing) I just did.
It, uh, it doesn't always shut down, and it doesn't always keep the water off the houses across the street. But I, I, we're home usually by six thirty, seven o'clock at night, open the blinds, and I watch the fountain come up, and I watch the fountain shut off, and love every step of it. I mean, I, I'm a big fountain fan, but I, I can see some value in letting the fountain run nine to nine with, with three or four hour, four times where the second pump comes on. I can see some value to that for the people that come to town. It won't be, I don't think quite as dramatic as watching it come completely on and shutting completely off, but I think having the fountain on all the time can have some advantage for the, for the, especially the, the tourists that come to town. And I would make the recommendation, to kick around while we're talking about it, let's do it on like a ninety-day trial. Let's, let's say, get all the programming done, start at August first, and that would let us run August, September, and October, which the majority of the snowbirds would be back by October. It would get the, the local citizens and the, and the people that live around the fountain that, that put up with the, uh, volometer not shutting off, it just jumps easy, Mark.
Okay.
But, um, you know, that would be my recommendation. I would, I would go along with something like that. And thanks, Mark.
Well, it's been a long process to set up, I mean, could that be set up by August, or...
Oh, yes, easily. Um, estimated, I believe the number was, uh, about eight hours, uh, four hours to do the actual programming, and then four hours to install it. So it's a relatively quick process.
Okay. And, um, if we were just doing it for a temporary time, could we just then put up some sort of temporary signage, rather than going to the expense of changing all the signs and, and maybe it wouldn't be permanent?
Sure, we could do something that would look, uh, obviously it's not gonna look as nice, but we could certainly put up something that would look, and most importantly, inform the public, laminated, so it would hold up to the weather, that kinda thing, certainly.
And, um, I'm assuming that our water quality would be improved with the extra duration?
We, we did do some calculations. I don't recall specifically, again, it, with so many options, but it's all a function, again, of how much water goes through. One of the challenges, if you think about it, we only are pulling the water from one location, that's where the pump house is itself. There are two wet wells, so to speak, and the pipes actually sit down and pull water from that location. But it also occurs to me that if you're pulling water from there, and then you're sending it back out in the middle race, you're going to get that mixing effect. So, that's precisely why we do it at night, and running the fountain for a longer period of time, we're moving more water, so that's always good.
Okay. Uh, councilman?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mark. Um, the, this is kind of new to us, as far as having proposals in front of us, so I wanted to just, um, say some general things. The motive there is things for this, even though we've been talking a lot about the water quality, it sounds like it's more to do with, um, attraction, or business, or tourism, or visitors, and things like that. So, just to kinda put it out there, to me, um, the, having a, having nothing happen, and then having it get come up, is kind of a spectacle in itself. So, so watching that happen, and then watching it come down, and then splash, and then disappear, um, is part of the whole show, I guess, uh, in my mind. I was thinking about, like, some of the other things that happen in the, the rest of the country and the world, like the Eiffel Tower, they have these, um, strobe lights that go on, but just every hour, but five minutes, and everybody kinda goes to, to see and make sure you're there on time. Um, you know, old faithful, obviously, which isn't, uh, still has which, but, you know, people will go in, and then they'll say, "Well, it's gonna go off in an hour, so let's have lunch," or "Let's do something." So, if we were kinda talking about that, talking about the visitor aspect of it, I like that it comes up at a certain time. I think it adds an air of anticipation, and maybe some of the businesses in the area, you know, could play around with it a little bit, say, you know, "Right, you just missed it by ten minutes, so for the next half hour, you know, two scoops ice cream for one," or, or something like that kinda plays into that. Um, obviously, I've lived here for a long time, twenty-nine years, and the idea of it every hour and the hour kinda appeals to me, uh, so, you know, I sort of, that, being a baby about it, making that same. Um, when we come on from patient, uh, you can see the fountain from this one area that's pretty far away. And I was looking at the clock on the, on a car, to say, "Well, are we gonna make it? Are we gonna get in that area when it comes up?" It's just, it's kind of a neat phenomenon to me in that way. The other part of it is the, um, uh, I would wanna know more information about the wear and tear on the pumps and the motor, you know, what effects would some of these changes have on any of those, you know, that actual stuff in maintenance? When would, would it change the replacement time, when we would need to, to do that? And then, um, talking a little bit about the median, and some of the things that are in our big picture. The water quality is in our big picture. Um, talking to the town officials, you know, talking about different relationships that we have there, um, and, and taking care of the, of the lakes, and then the median and the movie theater, I feel, I feel like, uh, and, and the intersection, which I'm okay to bring up, but I feel like we're kind of on the verge of making some big decisions about the area. The turf, the ducks, you know, it all kinda goes together. So I wonder if, um, if we did something for a while, would that be a source of confusion? Would it be, what, what would we be hoping to find in how we do this? Do we think we get more, uh, visitors, more tax money? Do we, or do we think the water will be better? What's the, the goal of it? And would it be okay to maybe wait a little bit as we're sort of on, I feel like on the verge of some, of bigger things, and maybe this would really fit into that, the branding, the whole idea of, of visitors. So, I just throw that out there. I'm not like crazy, you know, about, you know, fong, sort of about any of this. I just wanted to put some of that stuff out there and see what other people might thought, 'cause I really, literally, um, my fault for not looking at this a lot earlier, but this and then the newspaper yesterday was really the first I realized it was gonna be a serious proposal, so.
Uh, in relation to the wear and tear of the pumps, I remember my visit to the pump house, and, um, we talked about, uh, the starting and stopping actually being more of wear and tear on the pumps than the steady. So I think that kinda answers that question, that when you run it steady, and you're not, you don't have that big spike on and off, you're actually saving your motor. Am I correct on that?
Mayor Cavanaugh, that is correct. Uh, I would also say, uh, the other source of wear and tear is what takes place at the base of the pumps, with all the lights and shields down there. Every time that water cascades back down again from a height of three hundred and thirty feet, it's pretty tough on that equipment. So, it would help us in both of those respects, if there was the on and off.
Councilman Yates?
Uh, I have two things, Mark, not to put you in a corner, but what would you recommend on those proposals, or some combination thereof?
Well, really, in my mind, it comes down to two things. Um... People, for the most part, at least the ones that I don't hear about or hear from, tend to be happy with it. Uh, it's been operating at least ten years the way it is, um, but I also recognize that there's a lot of folks who would like to see it run longer, and if, if it obviously is the icon of our community, so the ability to run it longer, in my mind, makes some sense for lots of reasons. So I kinda like option number two, it's the best of both worlds, and then it also saves us some dollars. It's actually less expensive to run it that way than it is the way we're currently running it. So there's some advantages there as well. So, it would be either to keep it the way it is, or the option number two.
My, my second question or encouragement to go along with, uh, councilperson Dickey is, um, the, the more movement, I think, the better. I, I think conceptually, we're, we're right on it. We need to start doing more. I'm almost more apt to say, "Let's run it constantly, but then run the second one every hour and the hour the same way, so that we keep going." that we keep going." But, I, I kinda would defer to the visitors' bureau, or that maybe we need to sit down with the people who are in the know, and, and come up with a plan that says, "All right, here's the best way to get it." Not to paint the wrong picture, but Jesus House in Vegas, obviously, that show, that's something to look at. But, movement and water, obviously, there's more cachet to something like that, as opposed to just a running faucet for, for twelve hours a day. So, I, I would go along with number two with the caveat of, of sitting down with, uh, you know, whether it be the visitors' bureau, the people that were asking to help promote this, or some other group that might have some more expertise in this and come up with a plan. If we are saving money, and it's already in the budget, I'm, I'm not against spending that additional funds to do it every hour on the hour, or more frequent, to create that, uh, that ambiance.
Councilman Alford?
Thank you. Mark, uh, at present, uh, with the current schedule that we have, do you know the amount of water, perhaps, in that we circulate at present, at fifteen minutes?
Well, I, I can tell you that on three pumps, we run seven thousand gallons. So, we're running roughly, what, two thousand three hundred and thirty-three gallons a minute through each pump.
Right. Let's just say with what we're doing right now, where we're going fifteen minutes every hour on the hour with two pumps.
Well, you take two thousand three hundred and thirty-three times two, what do you got? Six, 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 six? Four, six, six? Nine hundred thousand, little, roughly over a little hundred thousand gallons. Times fifteen.
So, nine hundred thousand gallons, times fifteen, fifteen minutes each. Okay. Now, with the, with the option two, can you compare that as to how many gallons we would be moving? For ten?
Estimate, about a million eight.
About a million eight? So, we'd be nearly doubling the amount of, of flue that we would be circulating through if we were to do this option two.
Just to keep things in mind and perspective, the, the, the lake itself is a hundred million gallons.
Sure.
So, turnover is, it's, it's much, you know. But, obviously, the more water we can run through, the better, for water clarity.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Yes. Um, Councilman McKay?
Thank you.
Vice Mayor McKay.
That's, I respond to just about anything. (laughing) Henry's fine. Um, Mayor, I'm ready to speak apart. Um, I've been interested in hearing from the public if there are any comments.
No, ma'am.
No, okay. Well, that being said, I'd like to make a, a comment myself. Um, I think option two, increasing, um, runtime provides a practical solution. And we talked about what that practical solution is. It enhances circulation, aeration, which has a positive effect on water quality, at least in, in theory. Um, however, constantly running the fountain minimizes, um, its appeal. I mean, many residents, I've lived here for twenty years, many of the residents I've, I've spoken with, family, friends, as well as, um, visitors over the past twenty years on our, pretty much current schedule, find the appeal and the allure, um, of, of the fountain. It, it's, it's, it's coming on, it's powering up, it's going up, it's coming down. And if you spend much time at the park, as I do, um, and you observe folks, um, typically, what they do is they anticipate the fountain coming up, and then it comes up, and they get excited, and five minutes after that, their attention is elsewhere. So, I don't certainly question, um, the need to enhance, um, what we're doing currently. Um, I'm, I'm in favor of moving beyond the status quo. However, if we're trying to, uh, create more interest, um, by having it on constantly, I'm not sure that that addresses, addresses that goal. Um, I think that running it constantly on one pump actually makes it less spectacular than it is currently. And then pumping it up to two pumps occasionally gets us back to where we are. So, we've come full circle. We're running it continuously, and I think we're, we're at status quo. How about considering, if we are in favor of option two, running the fountain, as has been suggested, nine, nine AM to nine PM? Let's do something big here. Let's take a risk. Why don't we move it from one pump to three pumps, twice a day, at high noon and at six PM? Now, to me, that would be a, an attraction for visitors. I don't know if there's many of you that recall being here the one time or two times in twenty years that that thing was put up, three pumps. It was an event. So, what we're doing now is a non-event to attract people. And if we created an event, something we should really market for businesses, I would be in favor of option two with a slight tweak. Rather than doing this, excuse me, the two pumps for four hours, do the three pumps for two hours. And if you do the math, um, you're basically coming out with, with, with the same, same cost. So, I throw that on for, uh, consideration, um, and, um, my expectation would be that we would research it and hopefully stay within the budget. But, to me, that would be doing something exciting. Cause what we're suggesting now is longer. Durat- duration doesn't equal more effectiveness. If we're looking at creating an effective event, we need to do something spectacular. And one last comment. The one or two times we did that, we had people from in town, as well as people from out of town. And I look at this as enhancing an amenity, not simply for business, although that is a certain consideration in tax bill revenue, but doing something special for our own residents and their visitors. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Hanson?
Mark, how do we see making these changes fit in with the discussions with the sanitary district and the possible IVA?
Um, well, there's obviously a connection. I think the two are somewhat separate. Um, as we discussed this evening, there are obviously gonna be some benefits of this. It's not gonna go a, all the way to improving the water quality to the extent that, uh, has been proposed. So, it will not solve the issue. I think it will help the issue.
I think maybe we're overstating, though, the benefit of the aeration. I mean, I, like you said, the lake is very large, and this isn't going to do anything to move the water all around the perimeter. So, I, I want us to keep that into perspective, that this isn't gonna really help the water quality, because, you know, there's been a lot of time spent over the last year, you know, studying the water quality and how to improve the water quality. And, you know, every time we hear that, you know, just running the fountain isn't going to be adequate to do that. So, I wanna keep those two things kinda separate. Um, I do agree with Henry. Um, when you have something all the time, you tend to start taking it for granted, because you, you just know you're gonna see it all day, every day. And I, I think that there is something to the spectacle of the fountain going up and even watching it come down. I mean, it is, it is an event. And I think Henry's suggestion to, um, to take it to all three, he's going to kinda counteract the fact that, you know, it's just kind of a little pump going on in the middle, most of the day. Um, I'd like to see it running on one to get an idea of what it really looks like. I mean, I'm, I don't know if it's, it's going to be kind of anticlimactic, or, or what. And then, your suggestion to, um, uh, to get with SRP, I think that would be the first thing that we would wanna do, to get some firmer numbers, to, to know what we're really looking at.
And, Councilman Brown?
Two other questions, Mark. Currently, when the, when the pumps run at the evening, the nighttime, do the lights come on with it?
Correct.
If, if it comes on in daylight, do the lights come on?
No.
I've never looked at that, okay?
It's on, it's on a, it's on a timer.
And then, the second thing, can it be programmed where if it is nine to ten miles an hour, the second pump will come on? But, if you turn the pump, the third pump on it at, uh, nine to ten miles an hour, and elevate it to yet another two hundred and fifty feet or so, that really does cause a, a, a windfall of, of rain. Can you, can you, can it be programmed where if it is nine to ten miles an hour, only the second pump comes on? If it's five miles an hour, or below, not below nine miles an hour, all three pumps come on?
Very good question, but I don't have an answer for you, unfortunately. I don't know the answer to that. But, everything we've proposed to the program person so far, he's been able to do. So, my inkling is that he would be able to do that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dick?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, the wind, when you have the one pump up, I mean, yeah, just the one. So, so, if it's running all the time, and say the wind does get, um, whatever that amount is, that makes it go off, would it keep trying to come back up? I mean, because right now, I guess, if it's, if it tries to go up, and then it comes down, then it tries again the next hour. So, what would it do, you know, would it keep trying until the wind down, die down? So, so, that's something, um, to ask if we're moving forward with having it on all the time. And also, um, since I don't, I mean, I, I know you live there, but other people that live in that area, it might be good to find out what they think about, what it, would, would it be like? I mean, is, I'm not there enough to know. Does it spray even on the one pump? And, and would people not like it? Is there any noise besides the, the oil you were talking about? Or, so, if we're moving forward, I, that's the question. I do, and I would rather have a more definitive answer about the pump, because while I understand wear and tear happens when it's on and off, um, having it on all the time, there's, there's, I, I would just like to hear definitely what the ramifications of that would be. I mean, it's, cause it's kinda counterintuitive to think that you could keep something on all the time and not have that affect it one way, you know, a little bit. So, I'd like to know more about the wind, more about the neighbors, and, um, and then, I, you know, I, I'm okay with the, with the three p- pumps, because I think, again, it seems like a good, uh, way to attract attention. And I thought that was why we were looking at this more than anything else.
What, what, I was just gonna add. One of the challenges that we have with the wind is it depends on which direction it's coming out of. Because, if you think about it, some of the houses are far closer depending on which side of the, the lake they're on. So, fortunately, most of the wind, wind we get is out of the southwest. And so, um, that's probably the farthest distance before you get to any houses. Conversely, right across the street, at the pump house, is probably the closest spot at any point. So, uh, it really depends a lot on which way the, the wind is blowing. On really, really windy days, we simply go in there and switch it to manual, so it doesn't come on automatic, cause there's no point. Um, so, but that doesn't happen a lot. Um, but on windy days, again, that sensor will continue to sense the wind speed, and on this continuous runtime, at any time that wind drops down below, it would come back on again.
Okay.
Wherever we set that wind speed at, it would come back on again.
And I, and I think that some of the discussion we had had at the pump house, too, is that on that one pump, that it, it really doesn't spray, unless it's a heavier wind, it really doesn't spray outside the, outside the, uh, lake area.
Correct.
So, we'd be, we'd be safe if we were running it on the one pump.
And we, that's why I said, we'd probably be in a position where we could certainly turn up the wind speed, uh, twenty-five, thirty miles an hour, depending on if we're running it on one pump. Cause it would take a lot, a lot of wind, you know, monsoon-type three-mile winds to, I think, push it past the perimeter lake with only one pump. Yeah?
Vice Mayor McKay?
Thank you. Um, Councilman Hanson asked a question about height, and, um, doesn't have a sense for what one pump would do. You, you certainly know average heights for one pump, two pumps, three pumps. What, what are those numbers?
Uh, the maximum height on three pumps is five hundred and sixty. On two pumps, it's three thirty. And the only one I don't know, Henry, is the one. But, I would assume it's somewhere in a hundred and sixty to a hundred and sixty-five foot range. So, it's significant gain at two, and, and a real big, big bang at, at, a real nice spectacle at three.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think what we're hearing, what I'm hearing is that, uh, we like option number two. And I think now that Vice Mayor McKay has, um, gotten us all excited about three pumps, I think, I think we're, we're thinking about number two with, um, with an, uh, an addition of the, uh, of going with the three pumps maybe twice. So, um, would you like to make a motion to that effect, or?
Um, I'd be more than happy to make a motion. Are, are we looking for a motion here?
Looking for a motion. There's, there seems to be any more discussion than, than...
Councilman McKay?
Okay. Councilman?
Uh, I, I think, uh, what Vice Mayor said earlier was, uh, bringing it up to three pumps twice a day. Am I, am I correct in that statement? Yeah. I mean, I, I, I hesitate on a motion. I, I was thinking more about, you know, giving direction to staff, uh, to do some additional research on this. Um, because if, if we do move to three pumps, and it's cost prohibitive, um, that's an issue, and I would, you know, I, I, I wanna stay within, within our budget. Um, and I think to answer your question, you know, that, that's flexible depending on, on what the cost is. I suggested high noon, because I think that's a nice theme, and, and it draws the lunch crowd. And then, I suggested six PM, cause I could possibly draw the, the, a dinner crowd. And, and that's obviously flexible. But, I think cost has a lot to do with it. And, um, anyhow, is that answered your question?
It does. Thanks.
And one, one additional consideration, Mayor, would be perhaps doing it at six AM. And I know we have a lot of walkers out there in the morning. I think through our discussion this evening, um, I think we're probably going to look at a lot of feedback from, from, uh, residents of Fountain Hills. So, I think it would probably be best to wait, get some of that feedback, staff do a little bit more research as far as the numbers are concerned, based on what you've heard this evening. And perhaps this would be suited for our first, uh, council meeting in August. That might be better. Just, I don't think there's necessarily a need to rush anything.
So, are we kind of in agreement then, that we like number two, possibly going to twice during the day, um, on the third pump, and we're directing staff to give us some numbers and, and look into it?
I'd suggest just leaving out how many times, because if the numbers are favorable, it could be maybe even four times a day. So, that could be determined when we have more information.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Mayor, uh, Andrew, do we need to move on that if we're just giving direction?
Um, Mayor, Councilman Yates, the council has given direction in a number of different ways over the years. When there's not an official action to be taken, we're not approving contract or doing something else. By general consensus is fine. If you wanna have an actual motion, if there's some clarity that needs to be transmitted to the, the staff. If staff has general consensus, a lot of times, we just move on from that point and come back when there's actually more unique, uh, recommendations.
Councilman Alford?
Thank you. I, I, and I am agreeing with what appears to be, uh, a theme, or, I don't know, let's go so far as to say consensus, with the idea of it running continuously on one pump throughout the day, and whether that's going to go up to two, or go up to three, or whatever that may be, based on what we hear from residents and, and staff. Um, also, I mean, there's so, so many different variables. There's so many different possibilities to run it, you know, we're, we're gonna hear, I'm sure, from, from our residents, why don't you run it for two hours in the morning, don't run it all day, and then run it one hour at noon, and then run it at another hour at six, or any host of, um, possibilities. But, I do like the idea of continuously running at least one pump, because it does draw, uh, has a certain draw in, you know, our Fountain Hills. I mean, in fact, we've got the fountain right there. I mean, that's our, that's our logo. That's, that's who we are. And I, I think having it on at least one pump continuously, and then figuring out what we're gonna do as far as, uh, remainder would be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay. Then, like I said, it looks like we have a consensus that we wanna look into number two, the possibility of going up to the third pump maybe twice, depending on how much the cost, asking staff to look into the cost and come back to us, and reviewing it again our first meeting in August. All right?
Okay.
And we don't need a motion, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, everyone. All right. Then, we'll go on to number seven. Consideration of a stepping memorial with the Bill of Rights and the preamble. Honors for location in Fountain Park. Mark?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Um, the Public Art Committee is interested in putting up a memorial that would have both the preamble and the, um, Bill of Rights on it. Um, they are willing to pay the costs, which are currently estimated at four thousand dollars. Roughly half of that would go towards the memorial itself. The other half would go to the two plaques that you see in front of you. Uh, this would be located in Fountain Park, at the site there, adjacent to where we previously have placed both the Lincoln statue, as well as the Teddy Roosevelt statue. Uh, Representative, uh, Mrs. Miles is here this evening. If you have any questions, of either me or the Public Art Committee.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I had occasion to, uh, go visit with Gary and Jackie yesterday. And I'm, this, again, this evening with Jackie, and I'm sure happy to hear that Gary is coming along and getting healthy, and the tubes are out, and he's happy. So, that's good news. But, I've given a little thought since Gary presented the, um, the, the main idea to me. And I would like to talk about the possibility of placing it beside the flag pole and adding yet a, not only the two lights that light the flag, but the possibility of adding the third light on the pole, just as we have in, in the Centennial Circle, to where you would be able to walk by at night and actually read it. Cause we do have a lot of night visitors, and I would like to see if that could possibly happen. I'll even second that.
(laughing)
So is that a, is, is...
Mark, can that happen?
Uh, well, I, I guess my question is it's funded by, and the work so far has been funded and proposed to be funded by the Public Art Committee. Um, I, I don't know if they'd be willing to pay for that, is there some cost or is it exposed as a challenge for that?
We could certainly discuss it with them. But having, having a nice plaque like this illuminated at night beside Lincoln and Teddy, I think that would be, uh, a good thing.
Well, can, uh, can we, can we accept this but not as far as the placement goes and related discussion and, and let that go back to public art?
Um, Mayor, Mayor, members of council, you can pretty much do anything you want in terms of the, of the placement of this art. The only thing that we typically do is approve placement and, uh, the cost to install on the, the location. So if between now and the time that it was actually installed, the installation changed a little bit, I don't think that would really impact at all Mark's work with them between now and then. So the, the location could still be selected and that detail could be worked out between now and, and the time that they come back to us with the actual installation.
And there's a council discussion. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to accept and approve placing memorial of the Bill of Rights and, uh, preamble to the Constitution in Fountain Park as depicted.
Okay. And it's a great, it's a great idea. Any speaker, Mark?
No, ma'am.
Okay, uh, any other council discussion?
Mayor, uh, Mrs. Miles, please, uh, express the council's appreciation for yet another wonderful donation from the, uh, Cultural and Civic Association. It's truly making a huge impact on the town and improving the quality of life for everyone here. So thank you. You're here.
All right, and, uh, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilman number Elsie. Councilman Hanson.
Aye.
Councilman number eight.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Waze.
Aye.
Councilman number Brown.
Aye.
Councilman number Dixie.
Aye.
And Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mayor seven zero.
All right, then number, number eight, we got another one. Consideration of accepting and approving the placement near the amphitheater in Fountain Park of a bronze sculpture titled Coyote and Sea. And this is on loan for a period of up to one year, uh, during a fundraising campaign.
As you can see by my memo here, the, uh, cost of the piece, uh, would be nine thousand dollars and, but it's being acquired for five thousand. So the, uh, Public Art Committee is in a position where they're going to make the initial contribution of half the cost and then they will do the fundraising for the other half of the cost during this period of time. Okay. A new update.
That's all bad.
Kind of figure like I'm on roller skate tonight or something. Um, this is a picture of the piece. It's a very interesting piece. Um, one of the things we had an opportunity to do was, uh, walk the park with, uh, Mr. Miles and also, uh, Sandy Thompson, the chair of the Public Art Committee. Trying to figure out a, a, a spot that this would look to best at. And I, I think we were able to find a spot that we think will work very well. Um, you may recall that there was, uh, with the Greening Committee, there was a great deal of work done to improve the landscaping around the amphitheater itself. And so this location has been proposed, is adjacent to that area. Um, and there's a gravel area that runs along the side there. So we think it's a perfect location. It's the right size for a piece to go into that particular location.
Now, since we're, we have a donor now that's paying for it, are they okay with the location? Okay, that's good. Any other council discussion on this? Can I get a motion?
Go ahead.
Any speaker, Mark?
No, ma'am.
All right, any other discussion? Then I will call for a vote. Uh, how about all in favor?
Aye.
And your first?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay, good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, number nine is a presentation by Mike Tyler. Any Mike? With, uh, Arizona Business Advisors relating to the first quarter report and progress on goals that specified in the professional services agreement for the Jump Start Biz Incubator. All right, Laurie.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and members of the council. Um, this evening, I'd like to give you a little bit of background, uh, uh, on the incubator and then ask Mr. Tyler to come up and, and give a presentation on, um, the re, uh, the quarterly reports that they have been giving us, uh, on the incubator. As you recall, in September of two thousand and eleven, at a council work study session, uh, Mr. Tyler, who is with Arizona Business Advisors, presented information relating the establishment as a Fountain Hills virtual business incubator. The program, um, was intended to provide startup and small businesses with support services and resources in order to nurture their growth and increase the likelihood, um, that the business would be successful for the long term. Uh, at the December two thousand and eleven meeting, the council reviewed the program again and discussed the funding request because at the September meeting, there was a funding request, uh, from the town. Uh, the council directed staff to prepare and execute a six month contract, uh, to be one of the partners to help support the incubator. And, uh, we did indeed per, uh, prepare and execute a six month contract in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars per month for a total funding of two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a six month period. And the six month period was from July first, two thousand and twelve, to June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve. So that contract for services, uh, will end, um, this month, at the end of this month, which is of course the end of the, uh, town's fiscal year. Um, funding for an additional twelve months of the incubator is included in next year's fiscal, um, fiscal, next fiscal year's budget and to fund the incubator program. And of course, if, uh, if it's the council desire to continue that funding, then we will, uh, work with Arizona Business Advisors, uh, who's, who, uh, we contract with, uh, to craft the scope and execute that contract. Uh, this evening, uh, Mr. Tyler, uh, would like to review the progress of the incubator program. And then of course, uh, again, staff is seeking, uh, direction as whether or not the council desires to continue to fund that program. Um, it is in the budget that you all have approved. So, um, I will ask Mr. Tyler to come up and speak to you about the incubator. Soon as I get this up, Mark.
Thank you, I'm glad you're doing that.
And, um, okay, is it F five? Uh, where are we at? There you go.
Thanks, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to update you on, um, business incubator here in Fountain Hills. You, uh, may recall that we originally set this up as a public-private partnership between the town and the chamber and the private companies listed here on, on the chart. And when we set it up, we, we defined it, I, I think actually it was Councilmember Legay who defined it as an experiment. Because at that point in time, we didn't know the extent of the demand that there was gonna be for this type of service in Fountain Hills. And we did set some goals based on our assumptions at that time and I'll go over those in a little bit. And our original premise at the time was that we would use the existing business community to penetrate and make, make them aware of what we were doing. And the premise was that somebody would know somebody who knew somebody who wanted to start a business up. Because where do you find someone who wants to start a business up? They don't all congregate in the same place. Um, that premise has only partially proven true. And I will, and it, and it has required us to change focus a little bit. And I'll tell you, uh, how that's gonna look as we move ahead. Um, the partnership is operated by myself and my three partners in Arizona Business Advisors. And we currently house in about fifteen hundred square foot in the Meridian Bank Building. So what have we learned so far? I think, I think we had a good start. You know, we started up in February, so we've been operating now for about four months. We came out of the gate pretty quickly and picked up three clients, based on some of the preliminary marketing work that we've done. Subsequently, lost one of those clients as he got into financial difficulties and had to put his business plans on hold while he built up some cash. He says he's gonna come back, but who knows? It, it's been slow, uh, and neither of those clients are Fountain Hills residents. So it has been a slow start in finding Fountain Hills residents. However, the good news is that we expect, um, a resident to sign a contract on Monday. Uh, so that'll be our first one in Fountain Hills. And they are in the nutritional and, and wellness arena, kind of an interesting little company. Um, what we have found is that the most, most startups are coming out of the schools and universities. So we are having to somewhat refocus our efforts and, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. So far, we've seen limited interest from the existing business community. We have made efforts to put on free workshops and, um, offer support to existing businesses. Up until this point, there has been little demand. And again, we are gonna change our focus a little bit and be more proactive in reaching out to the ex, the existing business community rather than waiting for them to come to us. So I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute, too. I, I'm gonna skip over the next two slides, being respectful of your time because they're somewhat self-explanatory. And if you have questions, I'll answer them. But suffice it to say that the two clients that we do have are making excellent progress. Both of them have the ca, the capability of becoming large, scalable businesses. And, uh, we're finding ways to involve both of them in the local business community, even though they're not Fountain Hills residents. Uh, the activities that we've been engaged on during the four months that we've been operating have been building relationships, particularly with A S U. We've built strong relationships with other incubators. Uh, the College of Technology and Innovation out in Mesa has been a strong supporter. And we have developed an excellent relationship with the folks out at Skystone. All of those things will, um, will help us as we move ahead in the second half of the year. We have offered three monthly workshops. We had a very limited response to that. We'll continue to offer them and we'll see how that goes. And we have engaged in the regular marketing. We've done press releases. We've done social media. We've made presentations. I've made presentations to the various clubs and organizations in town. We've reached out to a number of the larger banks and businesses. Um, we, we're starting up a newsletter this coming month. Where we plan to go for the next few months is in August, we're going to launch a best business idea for Fountain Hills residents. So we will offer a prize of a thousand dollars and a free, uh, incubator for someone who comes up with the best business idea. They must be a Fountain Hills resident. And, uh, we'll have a whole series of, um, bases for monitoring and judging the various ideas. So that should kick off in August. I'm also working with the high school to do a similar thing at the high school in the fall. Um, we've developed, as I said, a strong relationship with A S U. And one of the things I just want to spend a bit of time on is the Edson Grant Program. The Edson Grant is, um, based on a foundation that A S U manages, which awards up to twenty thousand dollars in cash to about twenty startup companies every year. And for those awards, there are applicants of about three hundred. So it provides a rich source of potential applicant Ferrari, applicant, Ferrari incubators. And on, uh, June twenty ninth, they're bringing, they're doing a bus tour of the winners of the two thousand and twelve awards. So there'll be twenty, um, twenty prospective candidates going around the ten or so incubators that we have in the valley. And they'll be coming here at ten thirty in the morning. So it's a great opportunity for us to showcase not only our own, our incubator, but Fountain Hills. So Mayor Kavanaugh has agreed to speak and I'd certainly invite, uh, any of the rest of, of the council members to, to come. It'll be a great opportunity to interact with some of these potential startup companies. Um, as I said, we're gonna try and be more proactive in reaching out to the local businesses. So we're starting a series of monthly lunches at the incubator. Our first one is on June twenty sixth, uh, this Tuesday. We've got five businesses coming. And we'll continue to do that, uh, every month for the next, uh, for, for the rest of the year. Again, just building the awareness, looking for people who know people. When, when I called on some of the larger banks in town just a couple of weeks ago, I was kind of surprised to learn that they'd not heard of the incubator. So clearly in some areas, we're not getting the message out. And we have to be more proactive in, in calling, which we've begun. Our original two thousand and twelve goals were to engage with at least fi, uh, five clients. And I, I viewed that as a twelve month calendar program. We're kind of on a somewhat different calendar than the town who's on the fiscal year. We're operating on a calendar, calendar year as are the other sponsors. But right now, we have three clients. Uh, I can foresee that by the end of this year, we'll easily beat that goal of five clients. Uh, originally, we were looking to attract at least two more sponsors. For us in Arizona Business Advisors, really not sustainable for five clients and, and three or four sponsors. We probably need eight to ten clients and maybe five to six sponsors in, in order to make it financially viable. Um, but at this point in time, we decided to back off, looking for sponsors and focus our efforts on getting clients first because one leads to the other, essentially. Um, as I said, we've made some efforts to support the ex, uh, uh, visiting, existing business community. But we are gonna refocus our efforts and, and re, and reach out there. We did say at the beginning of the year that we would evaluate the opportunity to look at a fully residential business incubator. We're really not ready to do that. And we, we are proposing to delay that activity until at least the end of the year. We've had a better chance to see how things are going. So in summary, I, I think we've developed a basis and some excellent rela, relationships and lead referrals. I think we have had a steady startup that should ramp up significantly in the second half of the year. And, and to our minds, this initial experiment that we've done has demonstrated enough potential to allow us to continue to support, uh, to, to promote the incubator with the support of our current sponsors. So we would ask that you look, uh, favorably on continuing to fund this for, for the coming fiscal year. And with that, I'll, uh, open it up to any questions.
Any questions for us from the council? Um, I, I think you've done a great job in just the six months that it's gotten started. I thought there would be more businesses and more people from Fountain Hills that would have been interested in taking advantage. Especially since you were also offering a service for people who had a business already that maybe, you know, were running into trouble and needed some advice. I know we see a lot of times, uh, people had, uh, other careers. They were an engineer or something and then they decided, you know, I'm retiring, I wanna open a store. And, and they thought that, well, you just, you know, you have an inventory, you open the door and people are gonna come in. And then they realized that there's a lot more to the business side of it that they don't understand. And, and I was hoping that some of those people would, would be reaching out to the program. But, but like you said, maybe the word just needs to get out a little more as to what you have to offer. But I think you've made great progress in, um, partnering with A S U. And I, I love the idea of reaching out to the colleges and universities. I think, uh, I think there's a lot of graduating students who are, who would take advantage of something like this.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I do think that in the second half, if we be more proactive with existing business community, we will see better results.
Councilman Brown, can I speak, ma'am?
Thank you, Mayor. Like I, you know, I applaud you for starting this, uh, incubator at absolutely the worst economic time that you could possibly start it. And what I'm seeing the economy grow in our industry, it's starting to pick up and it's starting to grow. And so you possibly have started at exactly the right time. You've gone through the learning curve. And as the economy picks up, I hope you get overwhelmed with, with new, new clients. And with that being said, I, I would voice my opinion to direct staff to continue supporting the incubator.
Anyone else on council? And then can I get a motion?
Was that a formal motion?
No, I, I'll just...
Would you like to make a motion then? It's a possible direction to staff regarding continuation. Mm-hmm. Well, I have, um, a motion.
Sure. I'd make, I'd make that motion to direct staff to continue working with the incubator.
Any speaker, Mark?
No, ma'am.
All right, then, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And your first?
Mayor seven zero.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good time.
All right, we'll go on to item number ten. Service contracts, consideration. We don't, we need four separate motions for this. Consideration of professional service agreements for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twelve, between the town of Fountain Hills and. Okay?
Yeah, members of the council. You have authorization for the first one would be the um authorization. Considering from the 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 budget discretion and the budget adoption um last week would be for the uh professional service agreement for Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce in the amount of a hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars for fiscal year July one, two thousand and twelve, June thirty, two thousand and thirteen. Staff recommendation to approve the contract.
And so um you're starting with?
I'm sorry, I'm this one, didn't I?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
That's okay. Um we can start with the tourism. Can I get a motion on that one?
Don't move.
Second?
Second. I thought she had the first.
Um any super cards on this?
No, ma'am.
Any other council discussion on the tourism? All right, then, our roll call vote, please, staff.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero?
Thank you. Now we'll go back to the first one.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, consideration of professional service agreements for extended hand food bank in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for fiscal year July one, two thousand and twelve, June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, to provide food and social services for Fountain Hill residents. Staff recommendation to approve.
Can I get a motion? Second. And any super cards?
No, ma'am.
Any council discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero?
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, professional service agreement in the Fountain Hill Community Theater in the amount of seventy two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars for fiscal year July one, two thousand and twelve, to July, June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, to provide joint production workshop camp support for Fountain Fountain Hill residents. Staff recommendation to approve the agreement.
Don't move.
Second.
Any super cards?
No, ma'am.
Any council discussion? Okay. Any council discussion? Uh I have the uh same, I have the same um same problem that I had the first time that was brought up. Uh that uh the theater uses uh two of the town buildings, and the equivalent of that is uh approximately an eighty thousand a year in-kind donation. And I believe that um that is a substantial donation from the taxpayer, so I will be voting no on this one. Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
We don't have a motion yet.
I thought I had a motion.
No.
Second? I did.
Second.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Okay.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
No.
Five one?
Ten. Last one?
Mayor Cavanaugh, uh members of the council, professional service agreement with Boys and Girls Club of Scottsdale, McKee Branch, in the amount of eight thousand dollars for the fiscal year July one, two thousand and twelve, June thirty, two thousand and thirteen, to provide teen activity programs to include academic success, good character, citizenship, and healthy lifestyles for Fountain Hills residents. Staff recommendation to approve the agreement.
Don't move. Any motion and second? Any super cards on this one?
No, ma'am.
Any council discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Yeats?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero?
All right. And we'll go on to consideration with possible directions to staff to authorize an unbudgeted expenditure in the amount of twenty eight thousand seventeen dollars and twenty one cents to the Arizona Department of Water Resources for the municipality fee for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, as established by the Arizona Legislature, which was tabled at the December first, two thousand and eleven Town Council meeting. Okay?
Mayor Cavanaugh, members of the council, um Mr. Reese is here tonight to present this subject to you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Buchanan, um mayor, council members. Um on December uh first, two thousand and eleven, staff presented to the town council information regarding the town's obligation to pay a uh water user fee imposed to the, on the town by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. That was in the amount of twenty eight thousand seventeen dollars and twenty one cents. The authority was given to them uh by Senate Bill sixteen twenty four, which is state's uh environmental budget uh reconciliation bill. Uh during the meeting, the council uh chose to table the issue because council was given information that the legislature was uh going to be acting on this, uh whether to um repeal the bill or make um um adjustments to the bill. Uh Wednesday, March twenty first, the House Appropriations Committee uh um considered and unanimously unanimously passed Senate Bill uh twelve eighty eight, uh which repealed uh that bill. The legislature repealed the authority for ADWR to impose any fees um on cities or towns um after fiscal year uh uh twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. But there were no provisions that were uh given to them to repeal the current year. So um the um if there's any uh risk at all, um ADWR doesn't have any uh real authority to enforce the the town to pay it. It just uh reported to the governor's office and and um the joint legislature's office. I don't know if there's any real um um legislative action that can happen. Um with that, um you have all the information that was um presented on the December first uh meeting, and I will answer any questions I can.
Questions, staff? Councilman Elke?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, uh Mr. Reese. Um based on a previous discussion that this council had had and tabled this back in December, I can't imagine any scenario or situation based on the information that we have right now where I would vote in favor of paying this fee, considering what the town, the town doesn't have a water company. We, I mean, this is just a fee that would be imposed unnecessarily and, I think, without cause. Um but I couldn't imagine a scenario, based on the information that we have, where I would, I would vote to pay this fee. And that's, I think, in part why we agreed to table it back in December. So I appreciate uh appreciate the presentation and um, you know, let him send us to collections.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Raymond. Um the budget transfer that you would uh that where you would get this twenty eight thousand dollars from, how is that, when it says it's on a salary line, how is that um gonna be determined?
Um Mayor Cavanaugh, Councilman Dickey, uh it is the savings from the um chief building official. When he left, uh will be paid out of that. And we, in anticipation of of having to pay this uh fee, uh we cut short the wash maintenance program, so there was some savings there. We we did um fulfill the full contract with our our wash maintenance crew at a hundred and one thousand dollars, but there was some additional money above that, that we were going to do some additional work. So that was a savings from that.
So um Mayor, the um, so when this was imposed, it was imposed on cities and towns, municipalities, who um were incorporated. That's uh seventy-three percent of the state of Arizona. The Arizona Department of Water Resources is a state agency to um have services, legitimate services for the entire state of Arizona. Twenty-seven percent of the state was not um mandated to pay this. So the cities and towns are not only covering the state agency, the state's responsibilities, but also covering twenty-seven percent of the state. Um they continuously said municipalities were free to recover the cost, however we felt fit. But obviously, without water uh service ourselves, we couldn't pass that on to consumers, nor would I have wanted to do that. So I have no intention of voting for this either.
Uh first of all, I would like to thank State Representative John Cavanaugh for sponsoring the bill to end this fee. Uh he was the sponsor of it in the House, also when this originally was passed. He was the one who argued against it unsuccessfully, and it was passed. And I'd like to ask uh Andrew, what's the implication of not paying this? I mean, it is, it's it's the law. It's they're telling us we have to pay it, and are we supposed to be following the law here?
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh I would never advocate for not following the law in the state. Um the the question that's been asked by many municipalities that are smaller municipalities and general ones that don't have a water service provider is, um what mechanism by which can we impose the fees if we don't have a way to pass it through the customer? Um there are a handful of smaller municipalities in the state who have refused to pay. Um most of the larger cities that have water systems themselves pass the fee through and are coming to the end of the time of their imposing the fee, so they they've made the payment. Um but there are no penalty provisions built into the provisions, so we're not sure what penalty would be. Initially, when the bill was passed, their concern was that state showed revenue to be withheld. The city balked at paying the bill. Um and it wasn't, it's supposed to be a a one-year hit when the bill came out, and it actually was a continuing fee. That's when there was quite enough roar. The negotiation that followed, everybody says, one time, we'll go back and repe- repeal it next year. So I don't know how many cities have failed to pay, but I know that there are a handful out there who were initially refusing.
Well, I personally, I don't see why, just because there's no penalty. It's it's the law, and we're supposed to pay it regardless of how we pay it. Uh we're supposed to pay it. I mean, how does it look to uh residents if we just decide that uh we don't wanna pay this just because we don't, we don't like it and there's no penalty involved? I can't see how we could do that. Any other council discussion on it?
I believe Councilman Tate.
Oh, Councilman, okay. Give me a little signal. Not just a, my name.
I I do appreciate, that's why I do appreciate the the mayor's comments as far as this being the law and cities and towns, you know, for residents. We want everyone to follow the law, but I think philosophically and um you know, these are tax dollars that our residents have paid into the coffers, and the state's asking us to pay this fee. Um in my opinion, unjustly, in passing this cost down onto the town of Fountain Hills. And I think in this particular situation, it's important to take a stand on this. It's something that we discussed at the last meeting in December, when this thing first came across uh our desks, and and we were asking, well, what's this for, and why are we having to pay this? And I think the legislature's thought process, although I wasn't intimately involved with that, well, involved whatsoever, um is that the cities and towns would then pass it on to their residents, and that's how they would recoup it. Um I'm not in favor of raising, increasing taxes to recoup this, and certainly not in favor of paying this. So Mayor, I would move that we direct staff not to pay this fee that has been sent by the state and to inquire perhaps further with the state as to what additional action or legal, inquire to what additional action may be taken. I second that.
Well, I I actually feel that we're setting a really bad precedent here. Uh we charge fees in our town for all kinds of services, and maybe the next year, we change it, we reduce it, we raise it, whatever. Uh we have penalties for people not paying, but for us not to pay something that we have to pay and then ask residents to pay fees, I I I just, I think that we're setting a very bad example. And this is not raising taxes. This is already in the budget, so we do have the money to pay it. And I think that we should follow the law and pay it. It's been changed now. They didn't make it retroactive, so they didn't give us the opportunity not to pay it. And regardless of whether it was unfair when it was first imposed, it was imposed, and we are supposed to pay it. And I think, I think we should set a good example to our taxpayers that we expect to to pay their fees, uh and we should pay it.
Councilman Hansen?
Uh, oh.
Councilwoman Hansen?
Um when we assess fees, then we're providing a service, and they're assessing this fee on a service that we don't provide. So that's what makes me feel more comfortable, because it's, it's, we don't provide the service. So why would we be paying for this? I mean, the bill would more likely go to the water company. I'm sure they would love to hear me say that, but.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Yes, Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Um I've I've heard the the words um violation of the law, and um those are pretty strong terms, and I certainly do not want to violate the law. But it appears to me that the law has been repealed. So I'm not quite sure what law I would be violating by voting um not to pay this fee. Um this this is akin to um asking the state legislatures to pay um for our Parks and Recreation Department, um one of our own business units. The state has asked us to pay for one of their business units primarily, and um that is is um something that we balked at when we had this discussion initially. And um I I simply don't see this as a violation of the law, because the law has been, has been um appealed. Um I I like the motion that um was put on the table by Council, Councilman Elke, that uh we investigate this a bit further to determine um consequences, or however your motion was was put before us. Thank you.
I I would just disagree with that and say that the law has been changed. They didn't totally repeal it, because if they repealed it and made it retroactive, they would have said, you don't have to pay for this year. But they didn't. They said, from now on, we're not gonna have this fee. But for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve, you still owe us this money, and we didn't pay it then, we tabled it, but that doesn't mean it's still on the books that we owe it.
Councilman Tate?
Elke?
Thank you. What I think, I think what the what the legislature did is they passed a bad law. They realized they passed a bad law, they repealed it, and they didn't want to write checks to refund those cities and towns that had already paid the water fee. We had the foresight back in December to say, this doesn't seem like a good law. This doesn't seem like a, you know, this is something that we as a town should be paying. Let's table it, and we'll wait. And we waited, and the legislature did the right thing. And now what we're looking at is paying on a fee that was assessed before that has now been acknowledged to be a bad law. And, you know, I think it's a bad precedent, it's a fact, that you can do this, legislature, the state, you can do this to the cities and towns, and we'll pay it. We're not gonna balk at it. We'll just pay it if you pass it. We're gonna pay it if it's something that's unjust, uh or something that shouldn't be passed on to cities and towns such as Fountain Hills, in the instance of this water bill, that we'll pay it. So I think that, you know, we're, we're, we're saying no, and I think it's the right thing to do.
Do you have a council discussion?
Vice Mayor, if I, I mean, I'm the vice mayor here, the mayor. It's very confusing, isn't it? Sorry about, nu- 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 nu titles. Um Mayor, if I may, um direct, uh my question to a town attorney. Andrew, um if we um decide not to pay this, um and you could refuse yourself if you choose to, but we violate the law in any way.
Now, Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor, I, I don't think there's any way to frame it other than that there's a statute requirement to pay the fee, that the fee's been repealed, so that the current law today is that the fee doesn't exist anymore. But it did not impact the fee that was due in the current fiscal year that was adopted in the last year's legislature session. So like any good lawyer, you didn't answer my question.
For not being legal, I thought.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I I think I'm hearing you say that, what I just said, that this was in effect in two thousand and eleven, twelve, we're still required to pay for that year, because it wasn't retroactive that uh we didn't have to pay it. Regardless of whether there's, you know, no penalties if we don't pay it, it's, it's, we're still gonna get a bill that says we have to pay this, correct? Right?
Uh Madam Mayor, the the current bill in this year's legislature session did not have a retroactivity clause. It omitted the pre- the prior year. The discussions at the legislature were uh very clearly that the cities that had agreed and signed on to the prior year's bill had done so only because it was presented as a one-time hit. When it came out that it was- When it came out that it wasn't a one-time hit, then that was a complete one-eighty from where everybody thought they were. And the discussion this year was to repeal it so that it remained just a one-time.
Councilman Elke?
Mayor, I would like to, I'd like to withdraw my motion, um, based on what we're hearing here. And I would move to table this issue and wait and see. Wait and see what the legislature does, wait and see if we get a bill. Let's table it so we don't have to have a vote on an issue that may potentially be a violation of the law. But I would move to table this and that staff take no action, one way or another, on this. And we, wait. Second?
Councilman Scottson?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Lee?
Now that's an attorney move right there.
Too many attorneys in the room.
Um, I concur with everybody. To, to get a bill on a service that we don't provide seems ludicrous to me, but I agree with you, mayor, that the law is the law, we don't agree with all the laws, but I think Tate kind of found her way out here, so I would agree with that.
Do you have a council discussion? Well, I, uh, is that a motion?
It was.
And that was, you were through the other motion, you're making a new motion. Did you have a second on his motion? Say we have a second? Any other discussion on it? Alright, then we'll have a vote. Roll, roll please.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Elke?
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
We need more information.
Alright, just, just to table our vote. Aye. Mayor seven zero?
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, probably what would happen is if they'll throw the town manager in jail and I'll be picking up, I'll be picking up paper on Shea Boulevard.
Remember that, there are enough lawyers here about a...
Get me off, better than get me off, okay, there we go.
Alright, let's go on to number twelve. Consideration of authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of twen- well, twenty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents on the development services building division salaries line item, uh, to development services engineering wash maintenance line item.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I'd like to take no action on this item.
So do we need a motion or is this tabled? Because the other one's tabled. Okay, then we'll go on to thirteen. Consideration of Resolution two thousand twelve, Act nineteen, relating to the intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for law enforcement services provided by the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department to the Town of Fountain Hills for the five-year period beginning July first, two thousand twelve, and end in June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of two million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars for fiscal year twelve, thirteen.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, again, you have, uh, in, in front of you, uh, an agreement for a five-year period, which was the, the previous agreement was for three. Um, there's, um, the automatic renewal for one-year periods up to the five-year period. Um, there was some general liability, um, an automobile liability and workman's compensation changes, um, within the agreement, uh, no change in level of service, um, from the previous, um, agreement. Um, there were some discussions about to discuss, there's language in there for the de- deputies on scene within five-minute standard violation cited to the magistrate court. The focus on the community-oriented policing language, request for financial administrative information directed through the sheriff's office or chief administration. Um, so it's, uh, we think, uh, the staff, it's a very good agreement. We want to thank the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office for cooperating with us on, on a very good agreement for a five-year period, and we strongly recommend that you consider approving it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office for the great cleanup that they did on Shea. Uh, we had a situation where we had trash filled up, a lot of trash filled up on both sides of Shea, all the way through Fountain Hills. And I, I can't imagine why people just throw their trash out the window, but I walked up and down some of that section and it was, it was really an eyesore. Uh, people coming into town seeing that kind of trash, certainly our community was not shining. Uh, so I talked to, uh, Paul Moot and, uh, found out that, of course, because of the budget cuts, we only had, uh, two maintenance people from the landscaping company to assign to do not only all of Shea, but the median. And it would have been, uh, a big expense to, to get some people out there to clean. So I contacted the sheriff's office, and they were, they, within a week, we had, uh, the chain gang down there. Within four days, they did an amazing job, everything got cleaned up. And, um, very grateful for them for doing that, they saved us a lot of money, and now we're, we're looking good. We're looking good up and down Shea. Any other council discussion? Yes, Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Mayor, um, the budget, um, book that we have ha- has a, um, uh, a, a part of it during, with the publicity that talks about objectives and then accomplishments. So, like, last year's book had, um, for their eleven, twelve objectives, um, for example, participated in the town citizen county, um, crime-free multi-housing, that kind of thing. And that turned into the accomplishments in this book that we have now for, for, um, for next year. So, um, just, uh, I guess, um, i- i- if, if it comes up for, if there are any events or anything that we want to prioritize, that the option is still there for us to have, um, objectives for twelve, thirteen. There's just, there's just nothing, there's nothing in the budget book this time. So, I think this, um, this renewal, uh, in the past, we've had subcommittees that actually worked on the, on the contract, on the long-term one, which is, with this one, it's not just the every-year rollover. So this one got a little bit ahead of, I guess, ahead of me, I, I would say, 'cause I, I wasn't prepared. But, uh, usually we would do that. And I think, uh, Councilwoman Hanson and, uh, Councilman, you know, we're on the committee with me last time. So, just, I did ask about this, so we are free to have priorities, and of course, the town manager meets regularly with the captain so that, um, if it's situational, something happens, or even if it's just a, a philosophical thing that we want to do, it's a community preaching and that kind of thing, we still ha- do have that opportunity even though it's not in our budget per se this time.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion?
Some move.
Any special cards, staff?
No ma'am.
Any other council discussion? Can I get a roll call vote please?
Councilmember Elke?
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee Jay?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Mayor seven zero?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I'd like to give personal, uh, recognition to the town attorney and to the deputy, um, town manager for working this contract through with, um, with staff with NCSO.
Alright, thank you. Uh... Ken, do you have any report?
No ma'am.
Alright. Uh, and no report on these activities either? So then, all I need is our motion to a town.
Second?
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Mayor seven zero?
Alright, thank you, everybody.